We call the meeting to order. Good evening, my name is John Samia and I'm chairman of the Shrewsbury Select Board. On behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our May 28th, 2024 Select Board Meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Liz Poplowski of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. Tonight's meeting also will be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube starting tomorrow. All of our previous meetings are also available on the same platform. Before we begin, I'd like to go around the table and have members and town staff introduce themselves.
Carlos Garcia.
Michelle Conlin, Clerk.
John, oh sorry, go ahead, after you, I'll go left.
Town Manager Kevin Mizikar.
Assistant to Town Manager Justin Dobson.
And John Samia, Select Board Chair. First item on the agenda, motion to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Move opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review and act to approve the minutes of May 14th, 2024 meeting, May 16th, 2024 workshop, May 20th, 2024 annual town meeting, and May 21st, 2024 annual town meeting.
Move approval.
Second.
Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item announcements, reports, colleagues, any announcements?
I would just like to thank the community for the turnout yesterday at the Memorial Day Parade and Ceremony. It was a beautiful, it was a beautiful day for our community despite some gloomy weather to see how many people came out in the mist and rain to honor members of our community who have served our country and given their lives for it.
Thank you. Any others? I have a few. The Select Board is seeking qualified individuals to serve on the Shrewsbury Sustainability Committee and the Shrewsbury Development Corporation Board of Directors. The deadline to the, to apply for these seats has been extended to this Friday, May 31st, 2024. Also, the Select Board has issued a general call of interest pursuant to Operational Policy 28 for positions on the Affordable Housing Trust, Affordable Housing Board of Trustees, Community Preservation Committee, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee, Historic District Commission, and the Retirement Board. And to, next is to follow up on Mrs. Conlin's comment, also wanted to thank Parks and Cemetery, Kevin Esposito, and Recreation Laurel Rossiter, the departments that spearheaded the annual Memorial Day Parade. It was a great event. Also, if you didn't have an opportunity to see yesterday, I'd suggest if you have time, take a look. The speech was absolutely moving from John Griffin, a 30-year veteran of the Marine Corps. He delivered the Memorial Day Address at the Everlasting Memorial, and it was a truly moving speech. And I thank him for his service and also for sharing his experience with us yesterday. The last announcement, just to remind the public that we have office hours from 5:30 to 6:30 before the Board's first Tuesday meeting of the month. Usually have it right across the hall. Would love to hear from members of the community on a non-camera setting, a little more comfortable if you'd like, and love to hear from you. That is it from announcements, reports. Town Manager's report, anything?
Nothing.
Great, thank you. Next item is public comment. In accordance, we do not have anyone who's desired to speak tonight pursuant to Select Board Policy 31. This is our policy to offer our citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during Select Board meetings on matters within our authority. Those wishing to speak at regularly scheduled meetings must notify the Chair through this Select Board's office by the end of business on the Monday prior to its next regularly scheduled meeting by written correspondence or email at selectboard@shrewsburyma.gov. Next item on the agenda, it is past 7:05. It is a 7:05 public hearing to review and act on the application of Mavis Tire Supply LLC. Do business, doing businesses, Mavis Tires and Brakes. 142, uh, 11, number 1142, 287 Grafton Street for a commercial garage license. I want to open the public hearing at this time. The, this item requires or requests our approval for garage license applications from Mavis Tire and Brakes. This was located, previously this location was a National Tire and Battery, or NTB. It was acquired by Mavis Tires and Brakes in 2020. When a business is acquired by another entity, the new entity is required to submit a new garage license application. This had not been done before, and Mavis attempted to renew their garage license in spring 2024, which prompted town staff to direct them to submit this application. At this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Adam Luna, who I believe is joining us remotely.
Uh, yes, Todd, good evening, this is Adam Luna. I, I had a dial-in, I had a little bit of trouble connecting to the link, but I am on the line, thank you.
Okay. Any questions or comments? So for clarification, this is simply just because the name change, it's the same operations, business as usual, no difference as it has been over the last several years of when it was NTB?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Pretty straightforward.
This is a public hearing, would anyone from the audience like to ask questions or comment? I don't see any, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Have been moving in second, and all those in favor to close the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. What's the pleasure of the Board?
I move the Board approve the commercial garage license application of Mavis Tire Supply LLC, doing businesses, Mavis Tires and Brakes. Number 1142 at 2877 Grafton Street, subject to approval by the ZBI.
Second.
Have been moving in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It's not quite 7:10 yet, so why don't we go to item nine? This is just the Select Board calendar from July until December. Any comments or questions? Oh, you're all set, thank you very much, and Mr. Luna.
All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Am I, am I about to jump off now?
Yes, you are, thank you. You're more than welcome to stay on, but I, thank you.
All right, I'll take your pass, have a good evening, folks, take care, thank you so much.
Thank you, thanks, Michelle. We'll go to item nine, which is approval of the calendar for the next six months. Just give me a second here. Any questions or comments? So we have meetings starting July 11th, 2024, and through December 17th, rather than the fourth Tuesday of the month because it falls around the holiday season. Any questions or comments to the calendar?
No, looks good.
Now I'll entertain a motion.
Um, move approval of the July through December 2024 calendar as laid out on our schedule.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. It is now 7:10, so we can go back in order. So, meeting, under meetings and hearings, at 7:10, public hearing, to review and act on the cable television franchise application of Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of Charter Communications, comma, Inc. This time I'll open the public hearing and invite representatives from Spectrum to come Good evening.
How are you?
I could invite you to introduce yourselves, please.
Michael Licione, area Vice President for Charter Communications for Southern New England.
Jennifer Young, Director of State Government Affairs.
Heidi Vandenberg, Communications Director for the Northeast Region.
Good evening and welcome.
Thank you.
I'd like to give an opening statement if that's...
Yeah, please.
Perfect, good, so, good evening and thank you, members of the Town Board. Just want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. My name is Jennifer Young, State Director of Government Affairs for Charter. I'm here with Heidi and Michael, who have both introduced themselves. We're here today to seek your approval for a cable franchise that will enable us to offer our innovative and high-quality video, voice, broadband, and mobile services to the residents of the town of Shrewsbury. In today's world, reliable, high-speed internet and cable services are not just conveniences, they are essential utilities that enhance the quality of life, support local business, and provide critical access to information and entertainment. Our company is committed to delivering state-of-the-art technology, exceptional customer service, and a robust infrastructure that will meet the needs of your community now and the future. We propose a partnership that will not only bring advanced services to your residents, but also invest in the local economy through job creation, community engagement, and support for local initiatives, including public education and government access television. Our track record in other municipalities demonstrates our ability to deliver on these promises. We are very excited about the prospect of working with the town and are confident that our presence here will bring sufficient benefits to all its residents. We look forward to discussing our proposal and addressing any questions or concerns you may have tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Charter willing to commit to reinvesting in newer technology if the initial setup proves insufficient?
So Charter always looks at our technology, but what we'd be coming in with is a fiber-to-home network. So it's the most state-of-the-art network that's offered today. And, but we continue as Charter to put money into our network throughout the country every year. We're upgrading our entire network as we speak over the next 24 months in 41 different states. So to answer that, yes, we always stay current with our technology.
Yeah, please, continue.
Um, have you, when was the last time systems in our neighboring communities were updated? Like is fiber available in Worcester, Northborough, any of our neighboring communities?
So we're in the process now of, for Worcester, the closest area to you, upgrading the network. It will not be all fiber, we're looking at a different type of technology for these areas because they're already currently built. The technology that we're doing in new construction builds, so Royalston and Warwick, for example, were all built fiber-to-the-home areas that we were able to gain access through, through building in rural America.
I'm okay for now, I might have more questions as we continue.
Thank you.
I have a few, I'm happy to...
Yeah, I have, I have a few too, I feel like they're kind of floating everywhere, so I may jump all over the place, but I think you, you mentioned that you were wanting to be a community partner. Could you just expand on how your community, how do you plan on becoming a community partner? How are you, you know, how do you do that in other communities that you serve?
Sure, I'll kick off, and then I'm going to hand to Heidi. But, you know, starting with just employing people of the community, so we have been a known employer throughout our 41 states, but specifically for the New England markets for some time. Even when there was economic downturn, Charter has never laid off any frontline technicians or, or any of our maintenance or engineering groups. So we've kept a steady commitment to making sure that families and partnerships grow. From a perspective of being a partner in the community, Heidi can share some of the efforts that we've had in other areas.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. So we have a lot of philanthropic promotions and initiatives that I'm really proud to talk about. We have Spectrum Digital Education, we support broadband technology programs, education and training in unserved and underserved communities throughout the company's service area. We have helped to fund more than 30,000 digital education classes, distribute over 13,000 devices, including laptops, and support the creation of 157 tech labs. So we're out and about in the communities with these initiatives. Some of the programs, nonprofit organizations we've helped is the Massachusetts Association of the Blind, Visually Impaired. They're right here in Worcester, and we, they gave them a $10,000 Spectrum Digital Education Grant for its Access Technology Training Program. So we're here to help the seniors in the community to understand digital technology because as we know, it's important that we communicate with those in the community. We've also helped the elder services of the Worcester area, another $10,000 Spectrum Digital Education Grant for its Tech Connect Program. We are also now working with the Worcester Community Action Council, we're giving them a $50,000 grant for Spectrum Community Center Assist Program, and that's where our employees get involved, we help renovate the center, and we are also helping their jobs program. So we're helping the community get jobs for those in the Worcester area and beyond. So there's just a few of the things, I don't want to go on and on for half an hour, but just some of the things. We also, our employees getting involved, our Worcester Call Center, very active in the community. We just did a huge event with the collect, we did a collection drive for the Second Chance Animal Shelter. We did events with the Planting the Seed Foundation, helping back-to-school initiatives for children in the Worcester community. We've done things with Friendly House, back-to-school holiday drives. So our employees are really passionate and engaged. We have also what is called the Spectrum Employee Community Grants, where those employees that volunteered organizations will give them grant, they'll apply for a grant, and we give them money to help their organization. For example, we just did something with the Worcester County Food Bank, we've got volunteers there, they put in for a grant, they nominate the organization, we give them grant money, and it helps the organization. So we do a ton of programs, we have Spectrum Scholarship Programs, Spectrum Digital Education. We are out and about, community very active, and we're proud to say that we're here as a community advocate, just to help many organizations.
And a little deeper to what Heidi's saying is, it's not all technology-based, so employees have the right, as Heidi mentioned, to sign up for things that are near and dear to their heart. So if there's something at the Boys and Girls Club, or something with the animal shelter, will still contribute to things that are not, there'll be just funds allocated to those resources to help them buy supplies or pay utility bills, or whatever it takes, we're in the community and helping in that manner.
Yeah, we feel we're part, we're fabric of the community. Our employees live and we work in the community, so that's near and dear to our hearts, and like Mike just said, we're out and about, you know, employees that just get involved in the community efforts to help those organizations, and that's, that's a part, that's our fabric. That's why our employees are passionate about what they do and being part of the community as we live and work in the communities as well.
Thank you, I appreciate that, that response. I guess, you know, community partnerships is something that's very important to me, and I think it's important to the rest of the Board. And I think along with that comes with the customer service and how you handle complaints or how you handle outages. So I'm curious to learn more about that as well, I know it's kind of broad.
So we have a, we have a 24-hour call center operation that runs not only local, so we have a, a large call center in Worcester that houses about north of 300 employees, but we have virtual call centers if there's ever a need for overflow. Some of those stay in the New England market, some overflow to other areas. In terms of what we do today locally, if you call in for an appointment, you're given a one-hour window. Most of our availability has been done for a repair in the same day, within a one-hour window. We offer installations within 24 hours for people that qualify for them. We have engineering support and technical support 24 hours a day, not just someone over a phone, but we have our engineering guys that are, and girls, that are out in those bucket trucks that work on the infrastructure. About 30% of those folks work overnight, so they're not putting a distraction on when people are up and using the network. We do any repairs that we need to do that are non-emergent in those windows, in those overnight maintenance windows. And we have people out servicing if there's a critical, like a car accident or a critical outage, we have staff in during the day to handle those also.
Do you happen to have data on like your average response time for outages?
Yeah, absolutely. So we are within, under 30 minutes response time for, for any type of outage. And as mentioned before, if somebody calls in, we do, we only offer appointments for, to come to your home within one-hour windows. We don't offer anything larger than that.
Just, sorry, I'm just...
No, go ahead.
Do you happen to have customer service offices in all of the communities that you serve, or is it just a few?
They're not in every community we serve. What we do have is local stores, so where somebody may want a convenience of calling in and not leaving the house, for this area, you'd have Worcester as the primary. Other states may not have a call center that size or in their state or, or surrounding area, but we do have what we call Spectrum Stores in almost every area we serve. Here, there's a surrounding, there's two surrounding stores, one in Worcester and one in the Grafton area.
Let me ask you a follow-up.
Go ahead.
So Mr. Garcia had asked about response time for outages, and you're, you mentioned that you, you only offer like a, a response within a one-hour window. Is that a one hour from the time of a call? So if somebody were to call and say, you know, there's an outage in my neighborhood, or like an outage in my home, or whatever, is your response time within that hour, or do you give them an hour window of, in which they can expect a technician to come out?
So just to clarify, I think we were talking about two different avenues. So from an outage perspective, something goes out in the neighborhood, the whole neighborhood's out. Our response time is 30 minutes or under as an average to get to an outage. A, you pick up the phone and say, my TV isn't working quite right, can you send somebody out? They'd say, yes, we come out to your home between 10:00 and 11:00 a.m. on the date of your choice. And you can, that's the, the difference. So the one-hour window is how we schedule appointments for convenience to get into your home, and then the outage really depends on where it is and what's going on. We've had outages that are shorter durations, but then there's some unfortunately that, you know, there may be a car accident, we can't gain access. So we're there and ready, we just have to go when it's safe.
Okay, thank you, I have a few questions. So looking at the license application, under section 21, it says, while the applicant intends to serve the entire town of Shrewsbury without having completed a full survey, it just goes through the, the description, when will you know if you can serve the entire town of Shrewsbury, and what will that factor be?
So we have no intentions of not servicing the entire town, I just think it's the language of the document. There's things that'll have to be worked out through the make-ready process with the town and the electric municipality on what we're able to gain access to from a poll perspective, and what, from the town perspective, what areas we're going to be allowed to go underground in.
Okay. And the very next section, in terms of being able, your execution on this is 12 months, but then it's receipt of all permits, poll license, and completion, so I guess, what do you think is going to be an estimate of the total timeframe? And can you describe the plan for those 12 months as well to be able to complete in such a short period of time?
So the 12, so make, the make-ready process is probably new to, not new to us, but I don't think you have any other providers here today besides your own municipality. So it would be up to, that time period's really going to be on you guys to get us back, you know, what's needed, if there's any transfers of polls, are there any raising and lowering? Those are the pieces that are the wild parts for us. In typical builds, we see that in some areas as soon as six months. In some areas, it could take up to a year depending on the duration of what you guys have to come back with on the fact-finding piece. To build the infrastructure, our estimate is after all things are cleared and we're able to build, without any delays or stoppages, it should take us about 12 months.
And what, do you have a detailed plan how you'd get there? Have you done this in other communities with that, in that period of time?
Yes. We've done this throughout the country in different communities in that amount of time. Now, what would have to happen is we'd have to really work with you guys on, from, if there's areas that you guys want us to be underground, we'd have to look at that, and those are things that all have to come out, but in the size of a build, our duration is typically about a year.
So you have a pretty ready, available plan that you could share as an example?
We have, we don't have a design built yet for the area because we still have to work through the, once we get through the franchising piece, then we'd have a better set plan of what we can share with you guys.
Okay, so let me go to a recent article in The Telegram. I think this is helpful to get some thoughts as we're looking about, looking at this. So there are five or six points, think it's an opportunity to bring those out in public, and let's just talk about it. So there was a question about customer service and customer interaction, and there was a independent board that looked at whether or not renewing the contract with Worcester, and there were many things cited, why not to? And one of those was Charter Spectrum had kept nine years of discounts that were taken from seniors as part of that. What has happened there? And, and some of the other customer service example was bills being billed the day before they were due, and then customers being charged late fees. What happened in those circumstances?
So I, I think for the senior discount issue, we are still working with the town on that. There was an instance or two where somebody did call in and they were denied a senior discount issue, and we have rectified that. We are working at the town, there are a number of complaints that we've gotten from the town that they, they will not share the actual customer information, so we can't verify there, you know, that you have to qualify for the senior discount. So we weren't able to actually figure out if, if those customers actually denied based on qualifications or for other reasons, because they, the town will not share the names of those customers with us, unfortunately.
What about the invoicing? The timing of invoicing, that invoices were sent out late and the due date the next day and customers were charged?
I'm not aware of that at all. I mean, we have, our customer bills are on a rolling cycle, so, but, but normally you're, you're given at least 15, 15 days to pay your bill.
Okay. Can we talk about customer service? You talked about response time, do you do regular surveys?
Surveys?
Yeah.
So we do surveys of installation work before it goes out.
What about customer surveys once you're in the field, you've deployed? How often do you reach out to your customers to determine whether or not they're happy with the product?
So after a visit, we typically send out a survey to hear from the customers.
And how do the surveys generally go? And then, just the other thing in terms of, talked about payment to the city of Worcester late, customer service we talked about, and then connections to certain public buildings never happen. So in here, in the license proposal, there wasn't a lot about some of the services that are provided in terms of with schools or public buildings, and how, what would the approach be for that?
I think that's, that's determined as we go through the franchise process, we work with you on return lines and where your feeds would be, you know, would, the needs would be, and we can discuss those with you, that, that's all part of the franchise negotiation
Just going back to customers, so is the standard terms and conditions for customers here, is that what you have, that for a dispute, is that the standard terms that customers usually have, that they go to arbitration?
In the, yes.
Okay. How many customers have had disputes that have gone to arbitration? That you know of?
That I, that I don't know, I'd have to get back to you with that information.
Yeah, so the reason I ask is that if they're, if you're a customer and you're not getting satisfactory performance, but the only way that you have recourse is go to arbitration, people aren't going to go arbitrate. So that's why I asked the question. Any other questions? Go ahead, Mrs. Conlin, please.
How would Spectrum plan to support PEG access and local origination program and giving the importance of, you know, community-specific content and the current support that is provided to, by Selco to our local?
Right, so right, as part of the franchise, right, there's the revenue, the franchise fees from the municipality, and the franchise agreements often include those fees paid to the town, which could be used towards public access also, as well as part of the franchise negotiations. We will determine what buildings might need those return lines for those origination feeds for your public access or your educational or governmental access needs. So again, that's, that's, we have a commitment to supporting PEG, we do that in all of our communities in Massachusetts, and we would, we would discuss those during the negotiation
Kevin asked some too, do you have any more questions?
No, go, go for it.
Take your time. Mr. Mizikar.
So kind of picking up from right there where we left off, so you had mentioned before that this is a, you're proposing to install a fiber-to-the- endpoint, fiber-to-the-home solution?
Yes.
Can you tell, tell me about the details of that network?
So it'll run out of our, one of our hub sites, which is local to either side of Shrewsbury, and then we would have an architecture that either allowed us to go underground or aerial, and then we would run a finish point to the customer's home, delivering complete fiber.
And what type of speeds or technical specs would be associated with a, with a system like that?
We would start at one gig symmetrical.
So this is a cable franchise license agreement, but this is, you're offering a fiber-to-the-home solution, so how will that work in providing cable TV services?
So we have a streaming package that we offer, two different options. One is a, a new platform we call Zumo, the other is the Spectrum TV streaming, so those two options would be available. The other piece that would be in there is we all still offer home phone and we offer mobile service.
And how would a cable franchise fee apply to those types of TV services?
So we do play, we do pay franchise fees on our Zumo service.
You do?
Yes.
Okay. You pay that in all the existing municipalities that you're in?
Yes.
Okay. And how about the other service?
The TV, the streaming service, no, that is not part of it.
Can you talk to me about the rates and the prices that you would be proposing in the community?
So I think that would be something we would get to closer to having pass franchise, but what I will say is that we are very competitive, especially with our mobile offering. We have rates today where people are in packages for with mobile and internet for $49 a month. Our minimum speed is 300, so nobody will get less than that unless it qualifies for a different type of program. So we offer speeds that would start in your home at 300 and above, as well as adding mobile lines for as low as $49.99.
And then can you talk a little bit about how your senior dis- And then can you talk a little bit about how your senior discount works from those prices and at those speeds? Is it, is it offered at every speed level and price tier, or how does it work?
Again, that would probably be discussed during the franchise negotiation.
And then, when it comes to municipal buildings, to Chair Sammy's prior question, I just don't understand exactly how pricing would work for public buildings. I know you referenced return lines for the fiber network, but what is, how does Charter Spectrum handle charges to municipal entities?
So I, it's usually one free drop per municipal location, and anything additional would be a billable service.
Okay. And how about internet service?
That would be a billable service.
A billable service, okay. And can I, can I just, my, my last area is, on the customer service side of things, I know you referenced customer service and surveying customers and understanding their experience when it comes to installs, but how does it work with customers in your general customer satisfaction surveys? Does a company do it nationwide or anywhere in municipalities in Massachusetts that we can point to?
We, we do have a nationwide customer satisfaction results that I, we can, we can send to you.
I'd appreciate if you could, thank you. And my final question, I just wanted to refer back to, you talked about the internet being an essential utility, and I certainly couldn't agree more. And just wondering how that works in having that in the hands of a, of a private sector entity versus a public center entity. I'm used to public center, you know, public sector entities providing critical utility services to customers, and that's certainly what we do across the board here in Shrewsbury. And I tie this back into kind of your pricing model and whether you're going to be offering, you know, teaser rates or low rates in the beginning. I mean, if it's your desire to come in and, and overbuild in the community and providing fast, reliable internet service is a reason that people move to Shrewsbury. So, how are you going to invest in that system? What are those prices going to look like? And how would we be sure that you're a long-term partner here?
So, from the perspective of pricing, you know, we kind of talked briefly about it. We're not in the market to come out and put something out and just change it in 12 months. We have packages that run for two or three-year deals, depending on what you take. We, we're looking to be a provider in not just Shrewsbury, but everywhere we service. We have done things and stayed away from things like additional equipment charges, where other companies have done that, or data caps and charging customers if they exceed their data. We have not done that. We've even come in and offered things like mobile discounts. So if you're an internet customer with us, we're providing unlimited mobile service starting at $29 a line with no taxes and fees. So we, we look at our holistic package to say we're not, we can save money in a family's home every year compared to what they're paying now if they look at what they're paying for independent services plus adding in their mobile lines. We are a very, very attractive option, not just now, but for the long term. We have not raised our flagship rates, you know, over some period of time. And we also offer additional, if you're an auto-pay customer, we offer you $5 off each month of your bill. So we've tried to find ways to be creative and stay relevant in a market that's very competitive. As every, as you guys know from the services that are offered here, the cost of content goes up every single year. And we try really hard to make sure that we absorb a lot of that internally as we start to develop pricing and packaging.
I just want to go back.
Go ahead.
My last question, I apologize. So, can you tell me what type of level of effort would be required to build out a community like Shrewsbury in 12 months? I mean, I don't, I don't, I guess I'd like to understand what your expectations for customers are and, and how that correlates to a 12-month development window.
It's, it's going to be obviously busy. We're going to have, we'll have a lot of crews working on, on the network and, and obviously pulling lines through, you know, areas that have poles and underground areas. It's not something that's not going to be visible. It's going to be a very visible thing. But it will take us, you know, somewhere in that, in that ballpark of about a year.
Quick question. In terms of, from a marketing position, I've heard different things that you said. What makes Spectrum better? So you come in a community, you understand you're going to present what you do, but what makes you go into community that differentiates you from the service providers that are there already?
So, I mean, it's, it's not, it's not a disputable moment. It's a, it's a fact that Spectrum offers the fastest internet in the country. So 41 states that we cover, we have independent studies done on that. We also offer the fastest and most reliable mobile service. Those are things that you will see in some of our advertising that goes out. On top of that, our service is very much in par with what we expect people to expect from us. So, you call in, you need an appointment, we're going to be there for you. If there's a storm coming, we're ready for it. We have people that work around the clock to make sure that our customers are up and running when they need to be.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Garcia?
Just going back quickly to the survey response, thank you. The surveys that you, the set, the, sorry, customer satisfaction surveys, are those made public at all so that people can see how?
Yeah, the last nationwide customer survey, I'll send it around.
How often does that get published?
That's once a year.
Once a year?
Yeah.
And you don't, you don't happen to like focus it into the states that you're servicing or even communities? You don't go that?
It's an independent study. It's not our study.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a third party.
So, sorry, just to clarify, nationwide, but is it also done by city, by town? Is it that granular?
No.
Okay. Any other questions before we open it up?
I'm good right now.
Okay. So this is a public hearing. Spectrum has applied for a license, and it's the obligation under applicable law to provide a hearing. So the floor will be open momentarily. If you'd like to speak, we'd like you to initially limit your commentary to two minutes. Come up to the podium and give your name and address, please. If you have any questions, while this is designed more for feedback, but any questions, please go through me, the chair, and we can ask the representatives as well. This time, I would like to open up the floor to anyone in the audience who'd like to speak. Please. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I think this reaches the appropriate height. All right, thanks for having me. So my name is Chris Roy. I am the General Manager of Shrewsbury Electric and Cable Operations, also known as Selco. In 1982, fine citizens of Shrewsbury voted to add the cable component to Selco, the cable operations. So since 1982, we've garnered the reputation and the experience that many of us, in fact, all of us in this room have grown to enjoy. So with that, in my capacity as General Manager, given the fact that the public, these citizens of Shrewsbury have chosen to invest in this, this by its very nature makes Selco a public good. And so the well-being and the interests and the financial health of Selco is directly linked to the well-being and the public interest. So, so with that, I just wanted to call attention in, inside of this two minutes, to several bullet points that perhaps may be atypical to what folks or you might see across the country. So, bullet point number one, which is I think the key detail, is this a notion of public ownership. So the well-being of Selco, if you have an erosion or some kind of financial risk that Selco further bears, then you as the citizens of this community are the ones bearing that risk. And so that's an erosion of your asset. You backstop all of the financial risk and the well-being of this organization. And so therefore, to invite additional parties to the table would be, in that very nature, a detriment to the public interest. So that's bullet point one of one that makes this a little bit different. Bullet point number two, we are part, you know, not to go point for point for what we just heard here. I think many of, many of you have heard me speak to, to a lot of what is said, but we're here local. All of our customer satisf, going backwards, all of our customer satisfaction surveys are for Shrewsbury. In fact, you know, I sit in front of the window. I can talk to people in, you know, in the, in the parking lot. I can, you know, I can meet people in the lobby. You know, we have a customer window. Our very fabric is governed by the residents. So we have an excellent commission of, of residents and neighbors. So, you know, taking that municipal entity at heart, we follow the same, fall under the same statutes as local government, select boards. We have, you know, public records law. Everything we do is open to inspection. We follow open meeting law. We had our own light commission meeting this morning. All of that is open to the public. As of course, we all know the private sector does not fall under those same regulations. So you, it's essentially a closed book. So everything we do, our financials, our decisions, rate-making, customer satisfaction, all of that is in public session with public feedback in a forum like this. And so, that's how you control your asset as the investors of this, of this business model. The other one I just wanted to touch on that we hear too is about competition. So given this is a franchise discussion as well, as we've reported on for many months now, perhaps different than maybe the 90s or early 2000s, we're in a very competitive TV market. We have seen, again, we're a nonprofit entity, so we just advise via the facts. We've seen subscriber numbers decline. Those aren't folks that are disappearing. You have YouTube TV, you have DirecTV, you have Sling, you have Fubo, you have Hulu, you have Prime, you have Netflix. I mean, I could go on and on for using up my whole two minutes, which I might be surpassing now. But in that vein, we're in a competitive market. So we very much are mindful of that. And again, leveraging our nonprofit status, our expenses are exactly what they need to be. There's no margins. There's no need to pay investors or dividends. And all of our books are open to inspection. So there's no extra fluff in there. And then, everything we do, all decisions are made in the public's interest, again, owned by the citizens. So therefore inherently, everything we do is, is directly linked to make sure everyone's happy. And so that's, that's our framework. And the last bullet point I just wanted to call attention to here is through our research, you know, in this capacity as General Manager, acting on behalf of the citizens and managing your asset that you've tasked me to do, I look at that as an advisory role. In our research, we found that you absolutely do have the ability to deny a franchise application. That's not in the public interest, and that might have an unfavorable partnership. And so, we, you know, I've spoken to a little, you know, a little bit here about the fact that this would be against the public interest because you'd be eroding your asset that you, you indeed do own. And then the unfavorable partnership component is, you know, you've spoke to a few things. We have a number of resources available that you're more than willing to have, but we certainly encourage you to look at this four, it was a four-year ascertainment period that the city of Worcester, right next door, did. So they've essentially done much of the work for us. But we have others like the town of Shrewsbury, you know, that reached a similar conclusion. And so between, between those two, not being in the public interest and having an unfavorable partnership as, as shown through prior research, you know, I, I strongly advise you and urge you to deny this, and we would happy to speak at that as much as you'd like.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Would anyone else like to speak? Please, come on. If you could introduce yourself, please, and your address.
Yes, hi. Good afternoon. My name is Eddie Lempitsky. I live at 11 Roberts Street in Shrewsbury. And I moved to Shrewsbury four years ago. And before I moved to Shrewsbury, I lived in Worcester. I lived at 349 Lincoln Street in Worcester for 17 years. I had charter. I want to say that, first of all, I love Selco. The internet, the TV is excellent. And also, I love the, the electric rates. And I just am a little afraid that maybe something might happen to Selco having competition. When I was in Worcester, charter, not too bad, it's good. But I have to say that I did not have a one-hour timeframe. That's, I mean, I, I remember that. I mean, I think that there was like a morning appointment or an afternoon appointment. And I remembered that I actually missed an appointment because, I mean, I'm going back a long time now, 17 years, okay, so. But I remembered that when I went to get installed, there was a pre-call. They called, and I screened my calls. I didn't recognize the number. I didn't answer it, whatever. They just didn't come, you know, and I, because I didn't answer that call. And I wasn't, when I made the call for the appointment, I, I didn't, wasn't told that they were going to call, and if I didn't answer my phone, that they weren't going to come. And then I had to make another appointment. And it wasn't that, it wasn't the same day or anything like that. It was, you know, like, it was just like a, a new call. And the other thing I want to say is, you know, I think that when I lived in Worcester in particular, I'm not sure about this, but this is the feeling that I had, is that, like, I was treated a little bit different than the rest of, like, if you lived in another charter territory that had competition, they were more willing to like, they like wanted you more, you know. In Worcester, at the time, it was only charter. I think it might be still. I don't know. I know that the building in Worcester, there's maybe competition there now. So, maybe things are a little bit different now. But I just remembered that, like, these special offers and stuff like that were, were not eligible to me because I was in that town with, with no competition. And I probably used my two minutes also, and thanks for hearing me out.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
May I, um, may I? Am I able to respond?
Sure.
So, first, thank you for sharing, thank you for sharing your story. A lot has changed over, I would say even the last 10 years at charter. There may have been, back then, some truth to different windows, but over the past 10 years, we've been operating under a model of customer-first and making sure we reach those appointments in a very timely fashion. In the city of Worcester, we do have competition. So we do face Verizon every day. They do not offer a video product. They have not come forward that, for them, it's not equitable. We still do that today to make sure that we're servicing and offering people what we can in those specific areas. The other piece that I know we've heard over the last two speakers was about financial responsibility. If something happens, if people come over. We want people to come over. We think we have a great product to offer you guys. We have, and I will be on the record with this, we've offered Selco a very attractive offer to buy the company, and that offer was declined. So, from the perspective of trying to hurt the company, we're not. We've, we are going to build, granted a franchise, but before that, we did offer to buy the asset and continue the improvements that would be needed to make sure it delivers the speed and technology it should have. And I'm sorry that I interrupted.
I mean, I do recognize that Charter made the town an offer. I think the level of attractiveness is in the eye of the beholder.
Actually, talking about that, so, understanding what the offer was, what would it cost you to build up the infrastructure in town? Any idea?
I, I don't think that's for public at this time.
Okay. That's just something I'd weigh against a competitive offer versus, okay. Next person, thank you. You could introduce yourself, please. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sean. I work for Selco in the great town of Shrewsbury, Massachusetts. Try to keep this short and sweet.
Do I have your last name too, please, Sean?
Uh, Sean Breen, sorry.
Thank you very much. No, no worries.
So in 2003, on March 12th, Worcester's Cable Advisory Committee voted unanimously against renewing Worcester's contract with Spectrum. It sounds like the only reason that they renewed the contract, at least temporarily, was because City Manager Eric Batista says, "If Worcester were to deny Spectrum, it would result in a legal process that would result in customers without access to the PEG programs." Committee member Stephen Quist accused Charter Spectrum of not providing any explanation to the committee about the customer complaints of high rates and poor services. Some of those chief complaints were spending of high rates and poor services. Some of those chief complaints were spending hours on hold to speak to a customer service rep, waiting sometimes days or even a week before getting a service call. Stephen Quist also said that not one compliment went to Spectrum in regards to price, access, or customer service. I believe this move is in response to them losing business in Worcester because FiOS is building out. And my fear is that they're going to come in, they're going to undercut Spectra, uh, Selco's rates, and eventually drive us out of business, and then we'll be without the town's asset. That's my fear. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, introduce yourself and your address, please.
Greg Richards, 16 Hickory Drive.
Thank you.
Just one thing I'm, I'm struggling with, I think Jennifer, you mentioned, it was a sufficient benefit to all residents for Charter to be here. That's what you wanted to provide. I'm kind of struggling to know what any of the benefits would be. Selco's speeds are on par with what you're proposing from a Charter standpoint. I think it's very relevant what the actual build-out cost is, because the only reason why you'd be in business, you're a publicly traded company, is you're beholden to shareholders, right? Not to the citizens of Shrewsbury primarily. So the only way for you to recoup that investment is, you know, to attract customers, potentially drive Selco out of business, and then increase pricing to, to get a return on that investment. So as a resident of Shrewsbury who has had, I mean, I didn't have Charter prior, but I mean, Selco has done everything, you know, you'd expect out of utility. And I think back to Mr. Samuel, what you had talked about, I don't know if it's the same article, but my understanding was Worcester was actually exploring building out a municipally-owned fiber infrastructure because, as you said, Mr. Mizikar, that other, I think what the model is more nationally is for municipalities and to own, because they do treat internet now as a utility. So I struggle to understand why we would want to go back to have a publicly traded company in our town, essentially squeezing out a very valuable asset, which is Selco. So if there is a way, I say, to deny, you know, that agreement, you know, as a resident, I would definitely support that. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Could introduce yourself? Your name and your address, please?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Gordon Seemanha. I live in 86 Park Hill Ave, Millbury, Massachusetts. I'm also operations supervisor for Selco. Just wanted to go through a couple points. I was a customer of Charter's for nearly 12, 15 years. I'm still in, in Millbury. They're still a provider. I am no longer using their services because they weren't the fastest on the market at the time. I, I am a Verizon customer, fiber customer. I'm also in town now, in the progress with multiple technicians. We have eight in town consistently. Charter, not so much. I don't know what their, their vicinity of service personnel in town, certain towns are. But I'm, I'm pretty much guaranteeing that the technicians that work for Selco are like the family in town. They're here in town. They spend the time. They know how valuable that customer is to them. It's a more of a family environment. I think Charter's more of a business environment, you know? It's all about numbers and that. That's one of the reasons that I came to Selco, and I enjoy working with these guys. And it's, it's all out service. That's what we do. We're building the fiber network now. We're also, we're, we're building the newest technology. We're, we're building an XGS platform, which XGS, that stands for 10 gig symmetrical. So that's, that's right now is the top of the technology tier. We're building it. We have strict specifications. We're on a three-year plan. Unfortunately, COVID hit. We're in the process now, we probably have 50% of the town built, not on fiber, but built. Our goal is to complete all residence, residential homes by the end of this year. Selco in-house is building with their technicians, also servicing, also doing installs. So we know what's going on day-to-day. We set the tone, we set the specifications and our standards daily. We also, with that 50%, I mean, that's built. It took us probably two years to build that. Fortunately, COVID hit. We're probably going to do another year on residential. By 2025, we're hoping to get all the MDUs. We're just saving that for the last, that's going to just be a little more detail. But we're there. We're, we're building the town. And, and, and I think we got a commitment to the town that's, it's unparalleled. And I just wanted to state that fact.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else? To the microphone, introduce yourself, please, and your address.
Jonathan Malaver. I live at 35 Cypress Ave in Shrewsbury. I wear many hats. One of the hats that I wear is I provide IT consulting services to a variety of businesses in the Charter territory. I can tell you, this is not 10 years ago. This was actually in December. I signed a contract for one of the businesses to get fiber, business fiber, 500 megabits per second was $1,099. They, we were negotiating on waiving the construction. We signed the contract, and three months later, the contract was just voided by Charter. No explanation what happened. I reached out, I sent multiple emails and, and calls, and no response. There was another business, six months ago, that I, the same, same deal, fiber, business fiber, getting into the building. We got actually a different price for the same speed in, in Worcester, still in Worcester, but for some reason, different, different price for, for the same speed. With no explanation, I was working with the same sales rep, but no explanation was provided to me. In the other hats that I wear, I'm an electrical and computer engineer, and I know for a fact that Shrewsbury is close to 70% underground. And construction of underground probably goes between $80,000 to $100,000 per mile. I don't know the, all the mileage in, in Shrewsbury, but that's expensive. And I know that in the past Comcast has explored to come into town, and they just didn't see it as a, as a possibility. So 12 months to build out, that, that's not feasible. I can, I can, I can tell you that. And that, that's, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Please, come on in. Could introduce yourself, please?
Mark Sarah, Shrewsbury Media Connection. I'm not a Shrewsbury resident, but I do live in Charter territory currently. And I will say that I was a customer for 20 years, was. So recently, within a year or so, I had a problem with the cable internet, and they told me I needed a new modem. And the options were to, you know, I could make an appointment. It was a Friday afternoon, by the way, when this happened. So the next available appointment wasn't within 24 hours. I could get one delivered to me by FedEx, I believe it was, and that was going to take a day or two. But the third option was, you could make an appointment online and go to the Millbury Mall, which is what I chose. And so I made a 9:30 appointment on a Saturday. But when I got there, I was told that I didn't actually have a 9:30 appointment. That just got me into the queue. So I had to wait 42 minutes, even though I had a 9:30 appointment, to return my cable modem. So instead of returning it, I told them to keep it and went to T-Mobile across the street. But I just wanted to say that in the 25 years or so that I've worked in Shrewsbury, I don't think you could find a consumer who has spent 42 minutes at that counter waiting for anything. So I just wanted to bring that up. But I also had a question through you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
In section six of the franchise, the proposed franchise, it mentions that our PEG channels would be carried on the basic tier. And, but when I listen to you speak, are you offering a basic tier, or are you only offering streaming?
No, there will be a basic tier, yes.
Like traditional cable?
Yes.
And for the customers who choose to go, what, do you have two streaming routes? Is that what you said?
Yes, so there's Zumo, and then there's Spectrum TV.
And are the PEG channels carried on those?
Not currently. They, they will as we build out and upgrade our network.
Will that be in the franchise, like with the, a date for that to happen, so to speak, or?
That would be something we'd have to discuss with the town.
Okay. And would it require additional equipment?
Yeah, you, it would, there would be equipment, yes. Additional equipment with that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sean Walker. I live in Worcester.
Okay.
I would just like to speak to some of the options that they said they gave you. I've been in my current home for seven years. I've never been offered a discount. In fact, I started at $74.99 just for internet. And actually, I should recant that last statement. I'm offered a discount so long as I get cable with it. So if I just want internet, my price is my price. I started at $74.99, went up to $79.99. Now I'm at $84.99 for 300 megabytes. And they also spoke to the cell phone. Every time I go onto their site and check my rate, I'm still lower than what they're offering. So I just don't understand how bringing them in would actually save anybody here any money. Because I, I certainly have not saved any money. And again, I've never been offered any discounts, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm not seeing any. I have a question for you. Term of agreement. The current franchise agreement with Selco was five years. In the materials, it stated 15 years. What's the thought behind that? Is it the standard term, or is that just what was presented in the application? Are they usually shorter, longer duration? And if they're longer, why?
It's, it's pretty standard. We can't go down to 10 years. Again, that's negotiated through the town.
Okay.
That's our standard offer.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Please. Date your name and address to the record, please.
Hi, hello. My name is Eli Alvarez. Do we need your circle? So I have lived in New York, Framingham, Worcester, and the reason, the reason why I moved to Shrewsbury was because of Selco. And I think it's, for us, having a, like a family to us, and like they mentioned, on the phone or coming here in person, it's a, a, a very nice benefit. And I have three kids that are in the school system also. And I'm sure all the residents will agree that during COVID times is where Selco really shined compared to Worcester, night and day. The services, the, the support, the reliability of the services. I have been living here since 2009. And I don't remember when I got an outage, outage, or there was no light, there was no service in my home, maybe, you know, maybe 10, 15 minutes stop. Also, I was looking at the Charter, right? Is that a C-H-T-R stock exchange code, right?
Yes.
So, yes. Since 2021 till now, there has been a great decrease, 67% decrease. If I were going to look at a company to partner with, the first thing I would look, would be, would be the financials. And it doesn't look that good. Also, throughout the time here, I believe, in my opinion, you have failed to provide any specific data for us to review related to customer satisfaction, any financial benefits that the communities that you operate with are receiving, substantial data, figures that we can see and compare. You have come, you have come to meet the town's citizens unprepared, with no factual data related to survey, related to your revenue, and nothing related to job satisfaction or job retention within the employees that you have. And lastly, are there any revenue surplus options for Charter offer to town of Shrewsbury?
I'm sorry, can you?
Any revenue surplus options that, that residents might be able to take advantage of?
No.
Okay. Because we, as, as residents, we, we have that benefit, you know, any surplus revenue that, that the municipalities operate, they give back to the community. And I don't know of you, but I really enjoy that, having that free month bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Please, anyone else? Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the board? I appreciate everyone coming this evening. I'll close the public hearing momentarily. What the board will do is take the information received. We've all taken a lot of notes from the feedback from the residents. We have the materials in front of us. And we thank you for coming this evening. We will not vote in this, this evening. The expectation would be that we'd be in a position to vote at our next meeting. What I would ask for is if we could get survey data that had been talked about. Are there any other open deliverables that we had talked about that we want?
Follow-up after the meeting.
Okay, okay. So if there are no further questions, I'll entertain a motion to close the, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'm just curious.
Yeah, you're right. We'll, we'll continue the public hearing instead of close it, just in case there are additional. So, go ahead.
I was just curious. I had, I know we've received some correspondence from residents, and I also had some residents reach out to me directly regarding the issue. Is this something, I don't know how we handled this with the public hearing, where they weren't able to attend tonight. But they did ask, you know, for me to hear their feedback and.
Just general overview of what they had sent in.
So.
Very consistent. At least the emails had been pretty consistent.
Sure. So I mean, I'll, I'll share just the, I had, I had three different people reach out to me directly to discuss the issue. And all three sort of echoed the, the messages that we're hearing tonight about general, you know, everyone, you know, Selco is, is beloved in our community. It's not just, you know, great, you keep the lights on, you keep the TV going. Like, people love Selco in Shrewsbury. And, and that's really hard to beat. You know, it is a, it is a customer-owned, it's a resident-owned utility. It is our investment. And there was a lot of interest in maintaining that. There also did hear from two of those, the folks who reached out to me formerly lived in towns where they had, you know, Charter Spectrum service, and they were not happy with that service. I did live in a town 10 years ago, before I bought my house in Shrewsbury. I lived somewhere for five years. We had Charter. And I know things have changed in a decade, but we were very happy when another option came to us, I'm sorry to say. And, and I know many things have changed in that, in that decade, but it's, it's, that, that memory is long, and it's hard to let go of that. And just knowing how reliable and well-loved Selco is in the community, it's, it's, so I just wanted to share, you know, the, the feedback I had gotten from residents.
Thank you. Given the importance of this, rather than close the public hearing, folks who may not have had an opportunity to hear about this and not come this evening, why don't we continue the public hearing? Invite you to come June 11th, if you could as well, if other residents have not heard about this, understanding people live busy lives, would afford them the opportunity to ask questions at the June 11th hearing as well. We have a lot of information at this point, but if there are other residents, I think it's important to be able to, to comment or ask questions through me as well. Does that make sense? Does that work? Does that work for you, June 11th?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing.
Motion to.
Judge till June 11th.
Continue the public hearing to June 11th, 2024.
Second. Have a move in a second. And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you for having us.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for providing your feedback as well. We'll continue this public hearing at our next regularly scheduled meeting. So thank you. Just wait a minute, pause one moment here. So the next item on the agenda, I'll wait one minute here. Can we take a five-minute recess?
Yeah.
Or we take a five-minute recess if we could. We'll be back in five minutes. Be back in five minutes. We are back. Thank you for joining us. We finished with our public hearings. We're back into new business under Article Eight, review of the May twentieth, twenty-four annual town meeting. I'll start and open it up to commentary. We had fifty-four Warren articles to go through. We went through them on Monday, May twentieth, and Tuesday, May twenty-first, at Oak Middle. School finished about nine-twenty on Tuesday night. The fifty-four articles, there were four articles that were defeated based on various recommendations, including relative to the need for prior year transfers or transfers in fiscal twenty-four, MBTA zoning. The select board on May second had met and voted not to recommend that Warren article at this time, and Mr. Mizikar at town meeting provided an action plan from now to an anticipated special town meeting. And then the last Warren article that was defeated, again, based on retire, the retirement board's recommendation related to the pension and increasing amount of COLA, COLA could be ascribed to from fourteen to sixteen percent. They wanted to wait at this time, so they recommended defeat. So there were four articles that were defeated based on recommendation. There was one article at town meeting that was defeated. It was Article forty-two related to digital signage. There was a long, robust debate on that, and it failed narrowly. It did pass by majority, but not supermajority that was required. And then the citizens petition relating to the Clinton Street property also did not pass. So, all in all, of the fifty-three presented Warren articles, four were kicked out, or two were not recommended because no action, two were kicked out, and one was defeated. So it was a very successful town meeting. Appreciate the work of the Shrewsbury Media Connection that did the two days. Also really appreciated all the hard work of town staff with the budget, the information from Mr. Snowden, Mr. Mizikar, Mr. Baldinger, everybody from town staff through the budget process that had put together a tight budget book, really explaining what we do, where their funds are going, part of the general, larger conversation about the override commitment, the fiscal projection, how this all fits, how the budget ask fits within the strategic plan, and it's all tightly wound together. And there were questions and comments on the budget, but a lot of belief and faith by town meeting into the Warren article for the budget and the Warren article that preceded it, the override stabilization fund allocation as well. And the other good news, too, in terms of free cash that had been explained as well, excuse me, stabilization account, because we're able to put more cash in there, that we will hit our five percent of the operating budget number that we want for as well as being part of prudent financial practices. So it was a very successful town meeting, but a lot of accolades need to go to town staff for putting together a very methodical process with a lot of information sliced and diced in a lot of different ways, and opportunities for many to ask questions. And I thought that the debates on the town meeting floor were respectful and appreciated. Some were deeper than others, but town meeting members had also done their homework, and it was well-attended. So I think it was a very successful town meeting. We have a lot of work in front of us. It's May twenty-eighth, but we have a lot of work from now until special town meeting, laying out what our upcoming goals are as a board, with the town manager, and as well as the community, to continue to look for ways to engage in way, in communication opportunities for the community. And as I mentioned earlier during announcements, that would love to hear from residents during our office hours during the first Tuesday meeting, which is actually the second Tuesday of every month, five-thirty to six-thirty, and we have had good attendance. Love to hear from people, particularly any questions about MBTA zoning. I know it's a very complicated subject. We want to provide not only town meeting members, but all residents, because we understand vested interest in this community, and we just saw it a lot with the commentary and feedback on the potential franchise agreement. So I want to open it up, but that was my summary. I don't know if there are any further thoughts, but that was my recap. Any further thoughts?
I'd just like to thank Mr. Mizikar and town staff for the work that you did in preparing for town meeting. I think the materials you put out and the communications that came from your office via Taylor to all town meeting members did a really, really are setting everyone up for success, providing all of the information they need to be able to do their duty to our community well without, you know, without inundating them. And, but it was neatly packaged, well-prepared. There were several like modes of consuming it, and I just would like to, you know, extend my thanks to you and your staff on all the work that was done in preparation for a successful town meeting.
Thank you.
Yes, I certainly echo that thanks. I think town staff continually exemplify, you know, what it means to be prepared and, you know, just all the hard work that goes behind everything that just goes into the actual meeting itself. And I do actually want to take the opportunity to thank town meeting members themselves for running for the positions that they, you know, hold now and, you know, being directly involved in the future of the community. I think that oftentimes, I think the title itself may get overlooked, but it is very important. So really appreciate those who are re-elected and even newly elected as well.
Agreed.
Yeah, I would like to kind of just do the same thing. I haven't had a chance to publicly acknowledge the hard work of town staff that went into town meeting. I certainly get to sit on stage and respond to most of the questions, but that's only because town staff has taken the time to brief and prepare and, and work with me over the last few months to put me in that position to be able to have town meeting move efficiently. I'd love for everyone to be able to get up and answer their questions. I know they can do it. You know, we do it for efficiency sake, and unless it gets way over, you know, my head. And then, of course, we had some of those conversations were great. And, and I also want to thank town meeting members. I think town meeting members, you know, do a good job of preparing themselves, and we're happy to enhance the level of communication, you know, from the office and from town departments over the last eighteen months or so. So I'm proud of the job that we're doing there. But, you know, town meeting members, I know they take it seriously, and even if they're not asking a question at town meeting, they've reached out in advance or got in contact with us with some other way, or are just able to digest the information from being a town meeting member, you know, several times through. So I appreciate everyone's effort. It is a unique model of government that, you know, we talk about when we go outside of the state to conferences and other professional events, and I'm very proud of the outcomes from that night.
Great. Well, thank you. There's no action. Required under item eight, we already acted on item nine, so we have the budget set for the next six months. And then item ten, it's to review an act on the twenty-twenty-four affordable housing rent increase for Edgemere Crossing. This item has the next item, ask the board to review the twenty-twenty-four affordable housing rent increase, in this case, from Madison Place. These requests occur annually and require a certified vote from the select board and approval by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, otherwise known as the EO HLC. These adjustments are formula-based decisions. As such, the approval of the requested adjustments is recommended. Is there a motion?
I move the board approve the twenty-twenty-four affordable housing rent increase request for Edgemere Crossing.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Item three-zero. Item eleven is similar. Um, hold on. Yeah, this is Madison Place, but I just said, hold on. Let's go back. So actually, under agenda item ten, it said Madison Place. So I just, we just.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, no problem. The motion we just took was for Edgemere Crossing.
Yes.
Okay. And then for the next item, it is Madison Place. I bet. So next item is same exact logic applies. Each property has units with affordability restriction units, submits a request before increasing rent on these units. This is through the formulaic approach. What's the pleasure of the board? This is for Madison Place.
Okay, sorry. I move the board approve the twenty-twenty-four affordable housing rent increase request for Madison Place.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Motion carries three to zero.
Do you think we should be safe and just?
Let's go back to that. Yep. We will go back to ten. Déjà vu all over again. So, ten is to approve the affordable housing rent increase request for Edgemere Crossing. Same thing, is to review an act on the twenty-twenty-four affordable housing rent increase request for Edgemere Crossing. Is there a motion?
I move the board approve the twenty-twenty-four affordable housing rent increase request for Edgemere Crossing.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries three-zero. So this replaces or just clarifies.
Yes.
What we said before. So thank you for indulging me on that. We'll go to item twelve. This is a to review an act on a one-day beer and license application of Jack Collins, St. Mary's Parish, eighteen Summer Street, for a Taste of Nations event on June first, twenty-twenty-four, from five PM to eight PM. St. Mary's has come before us many more times, hence the need not to come forward this evening. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move the board approve the one-day beer and wine license application of Jack Collins, St. Mary's Parish for the Taste of Nations event on June first, from five PM to eight PM.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries three-zero. Next item on the agenda is to review and act on a one-day beer and wine license application for Jesse Tarbell, Sterling Street Brewery, one-seventy-five Sterling Street, Clinton, Mass., zero-one-five-one-zero, for the Town of Shrewsbury Food Truck Festival on Friday, June seventh, twenty-twenty-four, from three PM to eight PM with a rain date of Friday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, from three PM to eight PM. They did this as well last year with absolutely no issues whatsoever. This event is anticipated to have three thousand to four thousand attendees, and all documents appear to be in order. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move the board approve the one-day beer and wine license application of Jesse Tarbell, Sterling Street Brewery, for June seventh, twenty-twenty-four, with a rain date of June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Both dates are listed from three PM to eight PM.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Motion carries three-zero. Thank you. Item agenda number fourteen, similar event, but to review an act on the one-day beer and wine license application of Abigail Scaff, Broken Creek Vineyard, six-fourteen South Street, for the Town of Shrewsbury Food Truck Festival on February seventh, twenty-twenty-four, same time with a rain of from three PM to eight PM with a rain date of Friday, June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, from three PM to eight PM. They have not done this event before, but they've done many other events around, including the Yuletide Market, so they've also come before us as well. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move the board approve the one-day beer and wine license application of Abigail Scaff, Broken Creek Vineyard, for June seventh, twenty-twenty-four, with a rain date of June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four, from three to eight PM.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Motion passes three-zero. Item fifteen, starting to be like déjà vu all over again, but this is the last one for this event. It's going to be a great event like last year, so please join. Review an act on one-day beer and wine application of Jonathan Muldoon, Clover Road Brewing Company, three-twelve Main Street, Hudson, Mass., zero-one-seven-four-nine, for the Town of Shrewsbury Food Truck Festival on Friday, June seventh, twenty-twenty-four, from three PM to eight PM with a rain date of Friday, June fourteenth, from three PM to eight PM. All the documents look to be in good order. There are no questions? I'll take a motion.
Move per hall.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Motion carries three-zero. Next item is to review an act on the one-day all-alcohol license. It's not for the True Truck Food Truck Festival, but it's for the application of Rami Shamoon, St. Mary's Syriac Orthodox Church, One Industrial Drive, for a sweet sixteen birthday party on Saturday, June eighth, twenty-twenty-four, from seven PM to twelve AM. All the documents appear to be in order. Is there a motion?
I move the board approve the one-day all-alcohol license application of Rami Shamoon, St. Mary's Syriac Orthodox Church, for a sweet sixteen birthday party on Saturday, June eighth, from seven PM to twelve AM.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Motion carries three-zero. Item number seventeen, review an act on the donation bin permit application of William Randall Bin incentives group, Inc., doing business as Bin incentives for one donation bin located at one-seventeen Clinton Street. This is J&amp;M Market. Applicant has provided all the required application materials.
I move the board approve the donation bin application of Bin incentives for one donation bin located at one-seventeen Clinton Street.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Motion carries three-zero. Item number eighteen, is to review an act to appoint a tenant board member to the Shrewsbury Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to fill a vacancy with the term set to expire on May thirty-first, twenty-twenty-seven. This agenda item asks the board to appoint a tenant board member to the Shrewsbury Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. By way of background, this position was created through Chapter one-twenty-one B, Section five, as amended of Chapter three-fifty-eight of the Acts of twenty-twenty, which requires local housing authority boards to have one member appointed by the governor, three members elected by the town, and one tenant board member to be appointed by the select board. This act became effective on May fifteen, twenty-twenty-one, but Shrewsbury Housing Authority was able to obtain waivers due to already having a tenant rental assistant participant member serving on the board. We selected the first tenant board member in May of twenty-twenty-two, who recently moved to Worcester, hence the vacancy, which is required to be immediately, notices to be posted, common areas, and tenants must submit their names to the town clerk within thirty days, and we had three candidates. We had Stephen J. Boyd, Sandra L. Mancini, and Leslie J. Nichols. And like we have done in the past, we did this by having a ballot and submitting it only to Justin Dobson. So none of us had any access. only to Justin Dobson. So none of us had any access until 10 minutes before the meeting. Based on ranked priority, what we do is rank in order based on the material submitted, 1, 2, 3, which would result in points of 10, 7, 4. So in front of us, we have the results. And based on the results, Stephen Boyd has been selected. So based on the feedback from all members as compiled by Mr. Dobson and given to me right before the meeting. So that is what we have. It's Mr. Boyd, and that's the process. Subject to Town Me, Open Meeting, we can't communicate with each other. We don't, and this has been the process that's worked. Balancing is well that these are individuals that are applying for positions and it's balanced to make sure that we're also protecting the individuals and respecting the individuals who have put forth their names. So we appreciate all of them reporting forward, and they all have great credentials, a lot of good backgrounds, and please consider the opportunity in the future. But tonight, we have Stephen Boyd, who has received the most points. I'll entertain a motion.
I move the Board to appoint Stephen Boyd to the tenant board member position of the Shrewsbury Housing Authority Board of Commissioners to fill a vacant seat with the term set to expire on March 31st, 2027.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, none. Motion carries 3-0. Or unanimously, same. Agenda Item 19 is to review an act to appoint Anushree Mishra, 28 Eaton Place, to fill a vacant seat on the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee with the term set to expire on June 30th, 2025. Colleagues, as you remember, we have one rising junior or senior appointed on an annual basis. And while we do have vacant positions right now that are looking to be filled from the community, these terms are only one year for these, for the young students, so we didn't want to wait. So we put out the request for applications. We received this application, very qualified individual, and I'm comfortable moving forward, selecting for the DEIB committee. So what's the will of the committee?
I move the Board to appoint Anushree Mishra, 28 Eaton Place, to fill a vacant seat on the DEIB committee with the term set to expire June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Motion carries unanimously. Item Number 40, to review an act in the renewal of the intermunicipal agreement of animal control, animal inspector services with the towns of Westboro and Grafton for a one-year period through 2025. This arrangement originally began back in 2018, has been a very successful endeavor between the three towns. In the past, the IMA or intermunicipal agreement was renewed for six-month periods. The current IMA was for a one-year period, and the gist of it is it provides backup services in the event that the Westboro Animal Control Officer, who also serves as the Graftons Animal Control Officer, or the Shrewsbury Animal Control Officer takes vacation that exceeds two days and there's a process by which they notify each other. But it's worked out very well and the towns desire to continue and extend the term by one year. Is there a motion?
I move the Board to approve the renewal of the intermunicipal agreement of animal control, animal inspector services with the towns of Westboro and Grafton for a one-year period through June 30th, 2025.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 21, is to review and act in the renewal of the intermunicipal agreement of inspectional services with the town of Westboro for a two-year period through June 30th, 2026. The, this original IMA dates back to June of 2019 and was subsequently amended in '21. The IMA was originally one-year periods, renewed in 2022 for a two-year period, and likewise, this, the request is to extend this for two years. This IMA provides for backup services for, in the event that Westboro or Shrewsbury Plumbing, the wiring inspectors are out of the office for more than two days. So that is, again, a well-run coverage scenario given obviously limited resources for the communities, but it also provides that resource in these, under these circumstances.
I move, I move the Board to approve the renewal of the intermunicipal agreement of inspectional services with the town of Westboro for a two-year period through June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. There's one item under correspondence, an email dated May 19th, 2024, from George Germanos, 6 Redwood Lane, regarding placement of cameras and no trespassing signs along the property line. So noted. There's no other discussion or-
May I just note regarding correspondence, that we did receive some correspondence regarding the public hearing we held earlier this evening, but it came in after-
Yep.
-the agenda was set for this meeting, so that would show up on the next-
Yep.
-agenda.
Yep. No, thank you. There's no further action. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Have been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you for joining us. See you June 11th.